This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
We call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for April 3, 2025 at 6 o'clock. We could stand and say the pledge of allegiance wins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, so, do we have our agenda? Do we have anybody here for Citizen Speak tonight that's not on the agenda? Yes, okay, nice.
From here?
Sure, toward the middle, maybe. We can hear you better. Go up a little bit, toward the middle. There we go, thanks.
So, first of all, I'd like to...
Maybe.
10th of November, Glendale Road, Southampton. I'm the Chair of the Council on Aging Board, and I'd like to make two points tonight. I think it came up at a recent meeting where the Senior Center Director was present, that the Senior Center might have to see a significant reduction in their staffing hours. And I'd just like to point out that hours at the Senior Center funded through the town over the last year amounted to only 1.1 full-time equivalent. The rest was covered with grants. And we have made a request to try to get the staff on the town budget, so we don't have to rely on grants. But if that were to occur, including an unfilled position for the outreach worker, which we hope to have approved, if we took the current staff plus our request for the outreach worker, right, the total number of hours would still be less than two full-time equivalents. So, I'd like to make the point, I don't think that the Senior Center is overstaffed, okay? Or flush with staff, one. Two, in terms of what I believe is a very significant request from schools for funds, I don't believe you can reach those goals by decreasing staffing hours in a very small agency. And lastly, I'd like to thank the members on the Select Board for all of your hours of time. It's unbelievable, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Open time. All right. So, let's go Town Administrator reports. Scott?
Just two quick things. So, thanks to the efforts of Art Lawrence in the Tech Committee and Colin, our Nova's representative, we were able to get $40,000 for our Community Compact Grant for IT supplies, which is half of what we wanted, but it should at least cover one of either the library or the fire department, or maybe a little bit of both, so that's good news.
That's a connection to?
Potentially, or it could just be from a ground up for the library, for a completely new IT system, basically wiring everything, so. And that's it.
Mostly? That's it?
Yep, mostly budget stuff last week.
All right, various committee reports. Stephen, anything from your end, Select Board?
No, this is really Dan's domain. I was just a member of the public.
Okay, all right. So, Dan, take it away.
Yeah, so, the Housing Authority, first, we talked a little about 354 College Highway, which is a parcel of the street, the one we were moving along, want to get one house on there. We have to go back to GZA and have them do another assessment to help. The Habitat Humanity is the one we are hoping to partner with to make it easier for them. So, some more information we have to gather, so Sierra's going to work to get that, because they had done the analysis when there was a bunch of snow on the ground, and they need some information about what was underneath that snow, so hopefully we can get it from there. The other thing, which I think Stephen has an interest in, well, he has an interest in a lot of things, but this is one, the Housing Trust. And I think maybe we can look, when we're not super busy, we can talk about how we can get that up and running.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Could I say that well enough, or is there anything else you want to add?
That's good for me.
Okay, okay.
We didn't take that off-line.
No, that's got to be another discussion for sure, because I've reached out to the people that we met with earlier.
And the Planning Board was canceled?
The ConCon was canceled, so. All right, I'll take care of that. All right. Cindy?
So, I'm reporting on three. The Open Space Committee has transferred a chair, and the new chair is Mark Cassis. And we have discovered an ongoing challenge to completely fill the nine positions, which are six are appointed from boards and committees, and three are at-large. And we are making a request to modify our charge, which was previously created about two years ago, to allow for at-large members to become appointed by the Select Board when we're challenged with not being able to, we haven't seen a Planning Board member for many months now. And I, the one that was the Board of Assessors member, and will no longer be able to serve, and therefore, I really like the consideration of alteration of the charge. I did supply a draft of that for you, and you don't have to vote on it now or whenever, but that's really something we need. Secondly, the Board of Assessors, our recently-elected Chair, Linda Green, has been doing a lot of research on eligibility based on income for seniors to have an abatement. And we've discovered that the state allows something we had not been following for ever, for many, many years. So, she has a draft and will be presenting it, maybe she's already emailed it to you, of what would appear on the warrant, obviously for discussion and legal review, that would allow that. And especially considering the fact that our town is looking at potentially raising taxes, not potentially, but definitely raising taxes consequently. We're looking to make sure seniors that are in a category that they really are, you know, at an income level that would allow them to get a reduction in their taxes. That's a very critical point.
Just a question, this program has existed, and we have never taken advantage of it?
Well, we have...
It's got to be more than a form of it.
What's that?
We do take advantage of it.
We still, yeah, we still have 17 days.
That revenue line coming in.
But we haven't been keeping up with the eligibility for increasing the amount, and that's what we...
The ceiling.
Yeah, and it's all based on the CPI. We are working on a draft bylaw that would be, we think, or a charge, that would address the function of the Board of Assessors. Done some research on that, that's coming along. We are continuing to work on the Hoyle Water Works research, and there's quite a bit involved in that. And fortunately, Amanda Kemp works for the Registry, yeah, she's gotten permission to do so to help with the research in conjunction with her job. And fourthly, and very important, the Board of Assessors will only have one person running at this coming election. We did not have any nominations at the recent caucus. And saying this out loud, because it's being taped, we potentially have the opportunity for somebody to be a write-in candidate going forward in our election. We can't really function with a one-person board. Finally, the Board of Health is working in recognition of the fact that there's going to be a transition in management there when the current director does retire at the end of the line. So, they've been working very hard on that.
That's all I have to say. All right, good. John?
Nothing new.
Nothing new. We'll get to you later.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair?
Sorry, okay. Not yet, I was going to get there, I'll get there, I'll get there.
Okay.
Yeah, so, just one thing on my end. The main thing really is focusing from the Grant Committee. Grant Committee, Bruce is here tonight, thank you. And Kate Rooks and I have been working for more than, I don't know, at least a couple of weeks, it feels like forever, on the Municipal Vulnerability Periodic Research Grant. And we've been working with a consultant from Fussin O'Neill, who actually had done our planning project with us. And they've been very instrumental in giving us some ideas and pointers about what to do and what not to do in terms of MVP, and what MVP likes when they look at applications. So, an application is due in tomorrow by noon, and we're going to be doing our final edits a bit later tonight, at least I will, and revising the budget. But it's going to be about, around about an $82,000 request to do basically a feasibility, engineering feasibility study of Norris, to look at the idea of a potential cooling center at Norris, both for the kids, but for the general population, especially during the summertime. So, it'll be taking a look at what is the structure at Norris now, what can Norris do right now? We know how limited it is in terms of the AC that's up there, you know, what rooms might be able to be cooled? Could it be the cafeteria, which is this gigantic space, which might be possible, but costly? So, could it be other locations within the school that could be combined and possibly be just a cooling center? And again, we're not talking a shelter, we're not talking overnight, we're talking a few hours of reprieve during super-hot days. Also, taking a look, probably doing some surveys through the Council on Aging or the Friends to survey seniors to find out how they currently cope on super-hot days, when many of them probably don't have air conditioning, maybe don't have fans, you know, what do they do? Would they come to a cooling center? What are the limitations there? Same with the school, trying to work with the school and probably the SYAA to talk about doing a survey of kids and teachers' parents, just in terms of, you know, heat risks, heat illness-related risks of kids that are playing sports. And taking a look around the backside of the school, especially that doesn't have a whole lot of shade, it's got a fair amount of pavement, and that radiates a certain amount of heat that just increases the problem. So, in a nutshell, it's going to be, it would be a grant that would be, if we get it, it would start in October, and it would have to end by June. So, it's a short one, but we'd have to have this feasibility study done. But it'd be a lot of community engagement with it, too, and hopefully some learnings there. So, that's what we're working on, and hopefully we'll be a little bit successful. Who knows at this point in time? So, that's kind of it. So, I will jump to what Stephen was hinting at for me, I'm sure. So, just to say that this is Cindy's last Select Board meeting, so we... She's going to go out and, you know, go out with a bang, right? But we just sincerely, I think I'll speak for myself, and anybody else can chime in, but I just sincerely thank you for stepping up when we had a vacancy last year, and really had hoped you would be around a little longer. I'm not sure that you had planned to not be here. And so, we really appreciate all the work that you've done, and all the volunteering, and all the committees and boards and everything you've been a part of for all my time back here in Southampton. Well, you know, I was trying to figure that out today, so it's like, am I correct in saying that your first foray into town government was the Open Space Committee?
No, it was the Library Trustees.
Library Trustees, oh, I missed that one.
And then I discovered that they had such excellent people, and there was...
Okay, I guess I missed that one on my list of where I was thinking. So, anyway, but it's been, since I've known you anyways, it's been around that open space time about six or so years ago. And it's been one committee and one board, and anytime there's been a need to volunteer, Cindy's often been one of the very first ones, if not the only one, to step up. So, we really, really appreciate all your work, and wish you the best. We know we'll see you around, you're still going to be involved in Southampton.
This is my town, yeah.
Yeah, so, yes. Stephen, would you like to say something?
I could say much. Thank you. You have inspired me to become involved in town, me to become...
I don't think I inspired you, I think I just nominated.
That happened later. When I was brand-new in town, I found a YouTube channel, and I tuned into the Open Space Committee. It was back in COVID days when you were actually filming these things. And I was so inspired, I said, this is the town where I belong.
Things like that, yeah.
Good, yeah.
I guess, I tell you, one quick thing, I had a reason to talk to this woman today, and she had my phone number, she didn't know who I was, and she said, I better Google that phone number. It was my personal cellphone, and it came through as the Police Department phone number. Then she read the thing, and it had to do with some silly volunteering thing I was doing, or a Facebook post or something.
You never know, those things follow you around there.
That's not a signal check.
Anyway, so, good, well, thank you, Cindy, again, for everything that you've done.
Yes, all of you, too.
Anyhow, so, let's jump into new business. Now, I gather with the crowd here tonight, recognizing a few faces, I have a feeling that most of you are here because of personnel issues. Am I assuming correctly, I see Fire Police, COA? All right. Could we have a motion, or does anybody object to moving the PCFs up before new business, so people don't have to hang out unless they really want to?
Some move, let's move to PCF.
All right, everybody okay with that?
Aye.
Yep, yeah, do you have all the originals?
I have, Scott has the originals, maybe, in the yellow folder or the red folder, yes, I've got copies. So, with that, let me just say that I know what I've seen, and you can correct me, Johnson.
The first three, the first three on the agenda went through PQB.
Okay, so, and PQB, PPPB ended up, there was a meeting tonight, and they ended up canceling because they didn't have a quorum, is my understanding? Is that what happened?
Correct.
So, we have a first one on here that has gone through PQB, which is for the fire department. John, do you want to pick that one up?
Motion to approve PCF for Kyle Rondo, Fire Department, employee change status to full-time paramedic firefighter, hourly rate 2868, 40 hours a week, effective date as noted on the form, which I don't have.
April 1st.
April 1st, so retro April 1st.
All right, all right. Any discussion? Is Kyle here? Yeah, would you like to just come up and say a couple of words?
How bad is he doing your last?
So, my name's Kyle Rondo, so meet everybody. I've been emergency medicine since 2012. I started my career in Springfield, Massachusetts. Moved to Holyoke shortly after that, where I've worked most of my career. I've been a paramedic since 2017, and since coming over to South Springfield Fire in September, I've fallen in love with the town, the department. I've gotten fire training through the department, and it's a blessing to have this opportunity, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
This is one of the two full-time meetings.
Right, so this is a position that we've been hoping to fill for a good number of months now, so thank you. All right, if no further discussion, could we have all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so be it, welcome to the department.
Take the next two up in collective weeks.
Sure.
Except the resignations of Nathan Charette, effective 2/23/25, and Jeffrey Spratt, effective January 29, 2025, both with the Police Department.
Both with the Police Department, okay. All right, we have a second, all right. Do you feel like saying anything?
They spoke, were part-time officers, and they have, one got a full-time job in Connecticut, and the other one moved to Lordington closer to his full-time job.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, so these are both resignations, and they've already departed, okay? All right, all those in favor of both of these resignations?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so be it. All right, and then the next ones up are related to the COA, and these apparently...
So, if we have the originals, you can probably refresh my memory.
Okay, Scott, something? So, we have three, I believe. Program Coordinator and Volunteer Coordinator, which were increase in hours from, is a temporary appointment, if I'm understanding, I've got two things here, so I think I've got an emergency two-week appointment for Andrea Braxas, and then a, whatever it is, beyond the two-week appointment, but it's still a temporary increase, not the permanent increase. So, whatever's on our agenda was not correct, is that correct?
Where did you get yours? Because I only packed it out with the two pages.
They were in my package, so, just this, I don't have the originals.
Yeah, they might be downstairs.
They may be in there.
Grab them.
So, these have gone just through Bradley, they haven't...
Can I see what you have first?
Yeah. So, it looks like it was a two-week temporary appointment, if you just take one, so Andrea, for example.
Do you need me to clarify some of the...
Sure, Kate, yeah, come on, Kate, so, yeah, COA Director, do you want to clarify?
So, Andrea and Pam have been on temporary increase hours, honestly, since October. For our temporary increase in January that we had, I was told I needed to put in a permanent PRF request that was submitted to the PPPB Board in March. And then at the March 20 meeting, it was tabled pending budget discussions. So, after that meeting, I was told to put in an emergency request for a two-week, and then for a 12-week, as everything I was told was going to be put on hold with that committee, so...
So, that's what we had before us tonight, probably?
Yes, I don't think you have the permanent paperwork that I submitted to PPPB.
I know my Pamela was tabled, and I can tell by looking at this, but the Andrea one, continued temporary extra hours.
So, that was for both of them. And so, the four additional hours that we're requesting are being paid for out of the State Formula Grant and not town funds for both positions.
Yeah, so this, it looks like, I'm just reading this here.
All right, so the one for Pamela references the General Fund.
So, she's half and half, so she's nine hours out of General Fund, regardless of the increase in hours, her increased hours will be from State Formula Grant.
And that's going in?
But that's why that was held. And then the, I have a feeling, one of these was triggering the 20-hour mark, wasn't it?
No.
No, Andrea's...
But again, this isn't what was before the body, because my handwritten notes are on the original, and why it got tabled.
Scott, can you find those downstairs, man?
Yeah, I'll take a look.
Because these look like, so, for example, on...
I have one of the original PRs.
So, for Pam, it's going from, Pamela, it's going from...
So, these were submitted, that's what you're referring to.
14 to 18.
Yep, so this was Pam specifically. Andrea's, I could not find, it was on my desk, and I misplaced it, but hers was going from 10 hours to 14 hours, so neither were triggering benefits.
Right, and Pamela's 14 to 18.
14 to 18.
And she's got nine hours on the General Fund and the rest is out of grant.
Yes.
And this would be, any increase then would be coming back to...
Right, but look at this case, and keep in mind that that particular committee, if I isn't dotted and T isn't crossed, the General Fund is circled there. And Bradley signed it, so the committee sent it back for clarification.
Well, it's both General Fund and Grant, they're both circled.
But what circle?
They're both are.
Right, so that committee wanted clarification, what's in the budget, what's not in the budget.
Okay, well, we've heard it, it's actually written right here, nine hours town wages and nine hours State Formula Grant.
Yep.
It's written right on the paper, so I don't know what more clarity they want, it's right there.
I welcome you to attend the meeting.
I don't think I will join that right away, but based on whether Scott comes back, it looks like, I would say, right now, we're not going to deal with the permanent one, because I think that should still go through PQB at this point in time, perhaps, but we have the temporary one, that's what we actually have in our package tonight.
That was, yeah, so that's what the extra paperwork was for, the directive after that meeting, so put in a two-week, and then a 12-week.
So...
Correct, so once, yes, once clarification was up, then the director was on their own, they could issue a two-week emergency, and then get the regular paperwork into the committee, making sure the I's were dotted and the T's were crossed to the clerks.
Okay. So, we have a request, the temporary two-week, again, is an extension of where they currently are?
Yes, Robin specifically told me to put in a two-week, and then the 12-week, to get me through till June back.
But that person's going to say number of hours, is what she's asking?
Yes, yeah.
So, there's no...
So, it's just an extra extension?
Just a signed piece of paper in the payroll file to generate the paycheck.
Right. And so, the number of hours that are on here, which is currently working? So, for Pamela, or sorry, who would like?
Yeah, she's currently still working, because I believe that the, according to Robin, the hours were ending as of April 15th. So, they're still within their initial 12-week, and this will get them...
And this would...
Without a lapse in.
So, is Pam working 18 now?
She's working 18, fine.
She's working 18 now, so there's no change of hours, it's just extending the time.
She's doing 18 under an original 12-week emergency order.
Right.
And the 12-week cycle ends on April 15th.
Okay, all right. Is there any reason to not move forward with this? I don't see any myself.
Would you like a motion?
I would love a motion, sure.
I'd love that we approve both of these, two, PCQB, X, Y, Zs, for the two-week emergency.
And the extension?
And the 12-week.
Yes, unless, I mean, do we do the two-week, and then we come back to the permanent?
Whether you want separate motions, whatever, never.
So, the two weeks, the current emergency is running around April 15th. So, we need to at least get them, the temporary, which would get them to the end of the month, at least. All right, would you...
Motion made.
Okay, motion made, let's have a second, sir.
Second.
Okay, Cindy, sir. All right, discussions. So, these two-week emergencies would get them through the end of the month, then, it would extend them just by another two weeks. But your intention is to still come for a permanent increase in these hours?
Yes, yeah, that's what the initial paperwork I submitted in March included, was a permanent increase moving forward.
Because we don't have yet...
The second 12-week that is on the table right now gets to the end of the fiscal year.
It's like Plan C or D.
Because April 15th, two weeks on that gets you to May 1st, and you got to May, June, there's only eight weeks.
So, this is still the temporary, it would still be called a temporary appointment, but through the fiscal year?
Right, but meaning then, July 1st, whatever budget ultimately gets passed, was determined.
Yeah.
But what was given to the committee, whether it's right, wrong, or different, was given to the committee, because the initial was putting more hours in the General Fund. So, the committee questioned the soundness of doing that right now, prior to the budget being figured out.
That might be for one, for Pamela, but the other one, Andrea, has nothing to do with the General Fund whatsoever.
So, can I ask a question? So, Pam was always paid for nine hours out of the General Fund.
Right.
The increase would only hit our State Formula Grant.
That's what I'm understanding from what you're saying, right?
Yes.
So, that was apparently not clear whenever the last meeting happened, I don't know, not having been there.
It was discussed.
So, is there any downside to not, I mean, if this is going to get them through the end of fiscal year, that's the goal that you would like right now? And then if we have to pick up permanent hiring, we can do that at the end of June or something like that? Is that what we're talking about?
Correct, because by July 1st, the budget would have passed, and the original ask of the budget, whether it's been changed or not, was an increase to the General Fund. And then if that passes, then it's budgeted. If not, it relies on the State Formula Grant to fund it. And you got to go back, you know, the time that we met at that committee was prior to all this stuff coming out publicly.
Okay, so I think I'll take a motion, then.
There's a one on the table.
Yeah, we've got the motion for just the two-week extension, though, is that right? Or was it the full?
I'd be happy to amend it to however you want to proceed.
Two and 12, so let's go through.
Times two employees, neither of them to increase to a benefit level, neither to be granted permanent status, that's TBD, that's a motion on the table.
So, these are extensions of the temporary status for two people and increased hours, which they are currently serving right now, correct?
Yes.
Everybody got that?
I can do this.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion passes, all right. Next one is a new hire, I believe, this would be for the outreach position, if I'm reading this right, for Michelle Murdock, who is also serving as our Veterans Service Agent. And she's going to be taking on the position of the outreach worker, total of 18 hours a week. Is that correct?
So, what, I don't remember this conversation, but...
That was what was on the fee.
No, no, I mean, oh, for tonight, so we didn't already talk about it?
No.
Okay, so my question is, is the 18 hours plus the hours allocated to the veteran spot, that should be benefits?
It would, in this specific instance, the candidate already has benefits as a Veteran Services Officer through TRICARE and VSO.
So, this would be for that, and it would be for the outreach position, which, right now, anyway, is funded out of the earmark ARPA grant that you all got from Senator Vila's, through Senator Vila's earmark. And that's how that's being funded for this coming year, at least.
Yes, Scott and I sat down and budgeted it, and it should be good through the end of FY22.
So, there's no impact on the General Fund whatsoever, coming to the screen?
Not that we see currently.
All right, I would like to move forward with this, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that we authorize the hiring of Michelle Murdock for the outreach worker at Council on Aging to become effective on, where's the date? 3/28/25, and for the number of hours is 18 hours per week. Pardon me?
I'll wait until...
Second, second, okay.
Discussion, is she already performing these tests?
So, there was an emergency appointment, and then a firm appointment request. Yes, there was a statement I needed to train in that we had for one of our things last Friday, so it's to cover for training.
So, it's retro?
Retro, specifically last Friday.
Retroactive to 3/28? Retroactive to three twenty-eight, so that she participated in the training? So this is not an emergency two-week appointment? Where I'm getting confused...
Not the one you just read.
Yeah, where I'm getting confused is these little boxes keep getting checked, so either our forming, form is getting confusing here.
So it says part of it there?
Yeah, so I had submitted two specific ones.
This is handwritten and that one's not.
Yeah, so our, my initial one, because I did not have the corrected form available, was handwritten, and then the one that you're looking at, I believe, is the permanent.
Got it, same information on it, it's just the font.
Can you scroll down just a little bit, Scott? No, the other way, sorry.
Yeah, the emergency one was my handwritten, that's the emergency one.
A little higher, slowly, right there.
So that's what I'm seeing.
Yes.
So that's the two-week that authorized the training to help with the two weeks.
Correct, alright, and then this would take on, the other one would take, take effect as soon as that two weeks is up.
Well, because we voted tonight, we're basically validating or approving the hire date of three twenty-eight.
But it's more than the two-week emergency.
It kind of takes over.
Goes over.
Yeah, we don't need two separate motions, do we?
No, I would just state for the record, I mean, I know the answer, because you already shared it with me, but for the record for those watching, why we're bypassing the system.
Yeah, so basically because P Q B did not have a forum and was not able to meet tonight, and...
And the training's already happening.
Training's already happening right now, so we need to get that underway, so that she can get trained and be effective in the new position.
Right.
Alright.
You do.
I do have a motion to have a second, alright, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, motion passes, thank you. Alright.
Thank you. We're very excited.
Good. Oh, Michelle, yeah, sorry, say a couple words, I'm just going to introduce myself. Sorry, I didn't see you sitting in the corner over there.
I'm Michelle Murdock, I want to thank you for the opportunity of being able to work two jobs for the town of Southampton. I've been with the town for two years now, and I absolutely love what I do, I get a little excited, so forgive me if you ever come to one of my functions, I'm very bubbly, so make sure that everybody knows I'm there. So I appreciate you guys, and thank you so much, I will make you proud.
Very good, thanks, Michelle, much appreciated. And thank you already for the work you're doing with the veterans, that's been a big noticeable difference. Alright, very good. Okay, new business, I think we have to open the warrant for the annual town meeting, so Scott, let me turn it over to you to tell us what we're supposed to do here.
So if you take a vote to open the warrant for the annual town meeting, it does have to be at least a week in advance of May sixth, I'd like to get it, we're in a little bit of a condensed time crunch with everything, but I'd like to get it out as soon as possible, so if we could open it until April fifteenth, which would coincide with the other potential ballot questions, then I would be able to publish it April sixteenth.
Okay.
And by opening it, that's the call for articles?
Call for articles for the, for the, for the annual town meeting, so any departments, anybody else listening here who needs to know, there may be a committee or two or board that has an article to put forth, but no, I know CPC usually has something, so yeah, word is open until the fifteenth, or fourteenth, fifteenth?
Do you need a formal?
So let's, let's have a vote.
Make a motion to open the warrant with a closed date of April fifteenth.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we have, alright. Okay, now, we get into all the fun stuff. FY twenty-six budget.
So I was hoping to get a final budget meeting between the select board and FinCom for next Tuesday, and to take any final votes, at least as much as we can. There's just still a few question marks out there, obviously the big one is the school budget and potential override. The other thing is, I'm just waiting for the final tuition from Crystal over Smith vocational, for vocational tuition line item, that's one thing that we have to wait for. And then obviously on the state level, we haven't received the final, final, final numbers yet from the governor and the legislature, so...
So I guess the question I would have on that is like, we know what we budgeted last year for, is it, I mean, we've got that in there as a placeholder now?
I increased about, I think, ten or twelve percent.
Oh, from last year already?
Indication?
Yeah.
Did Crystal give you an indication of what the, what the per pupil increase is going to be?
Uh-uh, not yet.
Because in theory, you're going to have X number of seniors graduating, and then that is usually the same amount coming in. Now, last year, there was a big significant increase, isn't it seventeen thousand dollars per?
I think it's more than that, it's close, probably close to, I was looking at the school individual pupil cost, I think it's closer to thirty.
Thirty thousand per pupil, that's...
How many do we have over there, though?
That I don't have offhand.
Scott, for the benefit of the public, and because you have such excellent commanding subject, so many of these major cost items are out of our control at the current level, and in some cases, not yet, no, I mean, that's what we were just talking about, and without being pedantic, if you could flag those issues as we go along, I think that would help the public understand that, from what I read from the archives and from the unit gallery, we're doing better than we used to. There's a ways to go.
True statement.
So I have a question for the benefit of the public. Why is it we don't know these things? I mean, and I know in the newspaper, every municipality is struggling with these, especially school budgets, and what, what's going on? If you don't have an answer, but I will say, if you don't have an answer, we need to say that aloud.
By now, the kids that were going to go to vote should have already put in their notice that that's what they want to do.
April first is the deadline, so now we're in the two-week cycle. One of the issues is how being a town, we're the first, we're generally the first town to the ballot, we're the first one to have a town meeting.
Among the Hampshire district?
Just think about the Hampshire regionals, we're the first one, right? But the way the budget cycle has to work, we can't be the first one to get our budget, because central office has to be done in order to allocate through the regionals, and the regionals have to have a first read or a preliminary number no later than February, I think it's Valentine's Day, February fourteenth, somewhere around there. So it just starts this whole chain reaction, that all these other pieces need to get done in order to get to the regional budget, which then does Norris's budget, is one big issue with timing. And then on our end, we have this April first bylaw that says the budgets have to be, all requests have to be in by then, but vocational isn't even, couldn't even possibly be figured out. The other side of it is traditionally, we take the governor's budget, which is historically always the lowest, this year might be a fluke, and we just use that number, because then when the final one comes out, there's usually an extra, I think last year, there was an extra seventy-eight thousand dollars in there, that fell out and just becomes part of free cash. This year, I think Scott's probably right to be concerned, there's going to be cuts, and I think our final numbers will be less than the governor's numbers, so delay as long as possible makes sense, otherwise, we're going to be dealing with this issue later. And then, we have our internal problem that we just can't seem to get our free cash certified, which compounds the whole process.
So with the, with the, by holding off, well, if we meet again in a week, or certainly before, when do we have to have the budget voted on ourselves?
I'd like to get it done by April fifteenth at the latest.
At the latest.
And that would allow...
And that's because...
Mostly for the citizens, to make sure that we can have enough time to actually send it out, people to review it, because if there is an override involved for the budget, it 'll only give them a couple weeks to really look at it and ask any questions.
Right, with town meeting on May third?
No.
Six.
May sixth, sorry, May, sorry, May sixth, thank you, Lucy.
And there are a number of day requirements, right? We have to give so much time.
Right, but the challenge of knowing the vocational figure, are we relatively confident we're going to get that within these two weeks, Tom?
Yeah, they should have it any day now, I reached out to Crystal.
If the April first was the deadline, how, how long do they have to sort of say ye or ye? I know we, a couple times since I've been on select board, we've had separate petitions come in after the fact, saying, oh...
And those we don't have to fund.
My kiddo changed his mind, and he really wants to go to VoC after all, kind of thing, so we've had to deal with that, we're not talking about that, we're talking about people that are committed already to going to either Westfield or Smith or wherever.
Yeah, it has to be one of those two. And really, we're looking to see what's the net growth. If ten are expiring and eleven are coming in, then we got to go up by thirty thousand, or vice versa, we can go down by thirty thousand.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have any prediction of how many are graduating this year? Do we know? We must have that number.
Yeah.
Do you need to know how many people have applied from the regional? Would that be helpful?
Sure, Margaret, why don't you?
I have a floor and one.
Oh, Lauren, hi.
Hi.
Yeah, you just stand up.
If you give me one second, I can update, it won't, nothing's sorted.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I don't know where, if you wanted to put that, figure on that, where you put the vocational on the budget, in terms of how much you budgeted there, we're ready for that, just to show that, it's on, it's on our list here, wait, hang on.
Well, it's consolidated.
There are eighteen students who have applied from Southampton.
Sorry, eighteen?
Yes.
Have applied for VoC, and how many are graduating seniors?
I don't have that information.
Okay.
I only know how many have applied.
So is that about what we had last year, do you think, or is that?
I can try to look back.
That's good.
I don't get a lot of the Smith VoC information, but I can try to find what I have.
Yeah, I was curious about, if we've been kind of steady with a certain number, they always go to the VoC?
Yeah, we tried to take a look at that.
Okay. Thanks, Lauren.
Scott, what's the employee's name that's Smith VoC?
Crystal...
Because we went through this exercise last year.
Crystal Fairman.
Careman?
Fairman.
Fairman.
School Business Administrator, Smith VoC. And S. Berry, that's got my student.
Okay, well, we know that there's eighteen that have applied, so as long as, you know, whatever we've budgeted so far, and are thinking about that.
Last year, you had twenty-one students apply, but not all of them went, a lot of them actually ended up staying.
Right, okay.
So, but it's pretty...
Yeah, and I think, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm remembering that I think whatever we budgeted, we tended to, or whatever we thought we knew, we didn't, we'd kind of usually turn it down, lower it by like maybe two...
Usually ninety percent, just because they applied doesn't...
Right, just like that, that they don't necessarily all decide to go there.
So fiscal year twenty-five, they projected forty-two, fifty-five with thirteen graduating, so forty-two continuing to be enrolled, twenty-four students, new applications for twenty-five at the time. Of the twenty-four that applied and accepted letters went out on Friday, this is dated as of April fifteenth of twenty-four. As how many of the twenty-four were initially accepted, I suspect it's going to be thirteen, so that the funding stays flat, but that's just a guess. And as of last year, or what we're paying currently right now, Smith tuition is twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, and we have fifty-four students there, and we have one student at Westwood at twenty thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars.
Okay.
And this does not include transportation costs?
Correct, that's a separate sixty...
Separate line altogether?
That number we know.
Yeah, okay, so Scott, what you put in here, so the VoC tuition that we had budgeted last year was one point one million, one point one four one, you've put in one point two eight four, so you've put in an increase, assuming we've got maybe either mortgages or extra costs has changed, one or the other, so we've got a little bit of a cushion in there by that, what'd you say, twelve percent, something like that?
Twelve and a half percent.
That you've already built in there, so that's hopefully at least enough to get us through until we know the final figures, it's not like we haven't taken that into consideration already, okay, that's good to know. Alright, so, I'll turn it over to you, I don't know where we want to go with this, but we know that we, we had put forth, you know, a budget, and we know that Norris has had various school committee meetings, they've had their public hearing on the budget and so forth, but Scott, why don't you pick up where we, where we know we are at this point in time?
So today, I was able to talk to Randall, and with one of the positions that he has, he's okay with not funding half of it for next year, so the idea is still to move forward, two of the full-time ones for this fiscal year, he's a little bit concerned about training, because he only has two foremen, so he can't bring in on four employees all at once, so he'd like to do it in stages, so...
So he has four vacancies now though, right?
Yes.
And he wants to bring on two right now?
Yep, and we're advertising, we got a few candidates in, so he's okay with waiting at least a year to fund one of those positions, and that would get us to just a little negative eight thousand dollars for the balanced budget, and that's assuming the four percent for Norris School.
Is that changing any of the other prior adjustments that you shared with us?
There's a few others, so I have my sheet here.
So my understanding that he would not fill one, he'd try to fill two out of the four, not fill one until next year altogether, and fill maybe one of them halfway through the year, so staggered?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sorry.
I mean, that'll help our cash flow, but it's not really going to help in the long run, right?
Yep, so I did do the three point five percent for the transportation, I did put the conservation agent back in at sixteen hours rather than eighteen for three months for the upcoming fiscal year, and that's for transition. Currently, the conservation commission is at three people?
Yeah.
Three people?
Yeah, we're not quite sure.
And the planning department is almost at the negative for their consultant, their consultants over the last couple years have been funded almost entirely by ARPA money, so their fees do not cover having the amount of time that Richard spends, so in order to transition this, the conservation agent's salary is running out from ARPA as well, that's why we zeroed it out, and then we're looking to, hopefully, if we can transition from that and use some of the fees, readjust the fees for at least planning, bringing on the person to take over the planning and conservation roles that George sort of does right now, but also that the consultant does, so there's that.
And we just did do a small modification on the conservation commission fees, but it's not, I don't think they bring in a whole lot of fees, really, it's probably more planning board that brings in the bigger amount of fees, I would gather, and, but they, the planning board has its own revolving fund, does it not?
It does, there's not enough to fund it, so they may be a little bit in the negative right now, I talked to Bradley earlier, so if it wasn't for the ARPA money, they wouldn't be able to have George, not George, Richard knew most of the duties.
That's because new building is down a lot, so applications for new, you know, properties, A and Rs are just down compared to years ago.
This is true. So the idea that you're talking about would be to sort of combine, combine, I mean, we've been asked, probably for as long as I've been on select board, I think we've been hearing the request from planning board about having a planner, so you're talking about in lieu of the consultant, and the, and the Com-Com agent, who've both been very part-time and funded by ARPA nonetheless, you're looking at trying to combine that as one position?
Right.
How many hours per week are for that one?
It'd be about, well, it'd be scheduled for thirty-five, but the actual working hours would be significantly more, it won't be an hourly position, it'll be exempt.
Ah, okay.
So, I don't think we could afford an hourly, because they're going to have to go to all the night meetings, all of the Z B A, Forte Bell, building, all the meetings, so it'd be a very, very difficult position. And then I did talk to Rep. Pease, so he's actually meeting...
Backup on the highway, so that's how we...
Oh, yeah, so there was that fifty-five thousand dollar placeholder for, there's no removal that we want to carry over, so I wasn't sure that we could fit that in this year. So I, so balancing it out, I was, I had to remove that.
That's a permanent reduction to the highway department budget.
Well, we had put in as a placeholder, and then we were going to transfer to.
We moved it, the year before, we put forty-eight thousand dollars in there, and we put it in as machinery, and it put the intent to do that, so his budget had stayed consistent. If this comes out, his budget's going down.
Yeah, this isn't winter wages stuff, right?
But that's what this money would be used for.
It would be used for that.
Which means it'd go to free cash, which we'd have to have certified time.
That's a, that's a question.
Are we going to?
Yeah, I'd rather not spend the ARPA money for the conservation agent than this. Well, the ARPA money is out. I mean, by counteracting the ARPA money that we had.
Flipping it over to General Fund.
And then the revenue, so I talked to Representative Pease, he's having their fair share hearing this week, and is meeting with the Chairman of Ways and Means, and no word yet on what the Governor's appropriation or legislature is going to be doing. And then we have the, the school that Vito had brought over. This number had actually decreased a little bit to seven hundred and.
Sixty-three thousand.
Sixty-three thousand, so the numbers are constantly changing. And then I also moved the cemetery request to capital, I talked to Robert about those, so he's okay with that, and we're going to hopefully have a capital meeting on Thursday. And that's the last one, so I think we're going to be able to have a forum next Thursday to review things. We have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our capital. One of the issues is, we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars minimum for a new heating system at Highway. It's broken, and if we don't heat the trucks, the trucks don't run in the winter. So we have a little bit of time, but maybe something that we could go out to borrow for, for five or eight years, rather than taking up all of our capital, because I know that the chief has a few cruisers that he needs to have, the fire chief has SCBA.
He's got to repair on the ambulance, too.
Repair on the ambulance. So we have a lot of large needs that obviously won't be addressed with the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So Randall's is probably the most pressing, to get the garage heated for the wintertime, one way or another. So it would be great if we could keep it under capital, because it would save us on, obviously, interest if we have to go out to borrow, but it is what it is, because if we spend all of it, you know, we would be, we basically get a chief's new cruiser, and that would be about it for the rest of the year. So there's a few other things, the small things, just a few things around here. I just want to replace the flooring out in front of the chair where the salt rug is, so that should only be like a few thousand. We have most of that, we're getting quotes right now. Library as well, there's a boiler door that is falling off that Joanna needs to get. And then we have the cemetery request that Robert had mentioned before, and potentially the parks with the AED. I'd like to talk to Dylan, and he may, may not even need it, he's rethinking his strategy with the funds that he looked at over the budget.
So if we have about three fifty in capital that we know of right now, but you're saying about a hundred and eighty would be for the heating at Highway?
Right, so maybe instead of capital, we look at borrowing for it over the next couple of years.
But is a hundred and eighty, is that a pretty recent quote?
A year, and that's probably at a minimum, it'd probably be closer to one ninety.
Well, we're kind of, just catching together the same basic antique that we have there.
No, it would be a complete reinstall, so Randall, Randall thinks the current one's about a hundred years old. From probably the nineteen thirties-ish, so.
The new system would be, what, in?
They're using waste oil right now to make it through.
Waste.
Waste oil, yeah. So I think this would continue to be oil or gas, I have to, I can double check for you.
And this doesn't qualify, this wouldn't qualify under the ever source?
I don't think so.
The green efficiencies?
Probably because.
Probably not.
Probably because it's still fossil fuel, still.
Yeah, you'd have to probably convert straight to electric.
Has that been looked at?
I'm sure it has. I seem to remember that the Highway Department was in there when we went through this last round, and for some reason it got cut at the end.
For the Green Communities group?
Yeah, when we did the boiler switches at Norris, and we did all the other lighting through here.
If you take a look again in terms of the eligibility of it, I kind of doubt it.
I'd have a hard time supporting two hundred thousand dollar oil, gold chain boiler.
Wait till you learn about the oil thing, Barry, go there.
What, he knows about that, right? We talked about that last year. But this would be in the, not in the office, this would be for the garage, right? So that the trucks don't freeze up in the wintertime, basically, is what it is.
Isn't that what head bolt heaters?
So, John, what do you say?
No, Mike, I mean, again, this is just the reoccurring theme. It's right, let's defer maintenance all the way down the road, and then it shows its head in the potential override. But really, you know, we just heard that, the recommendation is we go out to the citizens again to fund a capital project. And are we really going to do, just say it's two hundred thousand? I mean, why aren't we doing a comprehensive plan and saying, you know, here's everything that we need to do, and we got to fund it on a million bucks a year? And I know that's what we're talking about.
That is the plan. If we've all had time to do it yet, but true, we've got a major capital improvement plan in process, but we've got to, once we can get through this part, we've got to really focus on the capital planning and make that. I mean, we've got inventories from the various departments, so we know where their priorities are.
And we really need to work on the education. When Proposition Two and a Half passed, it was never meant that it would be two and a half for life and set. It's designed to make adjustments as time goes on, and costs change, and needs change.
Well, and obviously, the two and a half percent never keeps up with labor costs or anything else.
It doesn't, but I wasn't around, or at least I wasn't paying tax bills back in the day when it happened, but you could turn around and get an eighteen percent increase in one year, but no say. So it made sense to put the two and a half in, now if you want to go more, we just have to build the case and go to the public and educate them. They either voted up or they voted down, right? But, so right now, all the, what is the, because this is, this is a new way in how we're doing it. You know, Scott has his recommendations for cuts. At some point.
Do you want to go back to the cuts?
When do we weigh in, and is it better to do it with finance here, to have a conversation whether, yeah, I'm okay with this one, no, I'm not okay with that, and then we build consensus on the cuts, or possibly look at other areas?
Yeah, I think we were hoping to get a finance meeting, they were, most of them were not around tonight. We were hoping to get them maybe on, even next Tuesday night, if we could.
Three of them have already said they're good.
For Tuesday, okay, that would be good. So in terms of the cuts that you just had up there for a second, Scott, you want to look at those briefly? They were at the bottom of that page you had up a minute ago?
I closed my accident, it's here.
Yeah, down at the bottom, just further down. All right, so this is what you've already proposed, and have you built that into the figures that we're seeing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
So this is, these would be the potential cuts to get us to this minus eight thousand that you have right now.
Yep, and there's no increases for salaries or anything like that, step increases or percentage colas, so it's just straight whatever's there now for personnel.
And that's because that compensation fund, the first one, we had done mid-year adjustments to salaries based on a new classification plan that we had worked on, but we were hoping to do another mid-year adjustment, or end of fiscal year, whatever we wanted to call it, adjustment. And we had put, was it twenty thousand in there, I think? And so you're saying that we need to take fifteen thousand back out as a possibility, a suggested cut anyway, to get us to even the balanced budget that we're at with the four percent?
So the non-union staff members, i.e. the non-elected Town Hall employees, their budget year over year doesn't include a markup?
Not for July first, no. No step increase and no cola.
Nothing.
For non-union members? What's that number?
That, it would be?
Yeah.
I didn't do the step increases.
Because it's not fifteen thousand.
No, no, this was, when we redo the job descriptions, if there were any changes in grading, we would be able to.
No, I got that part.
Yeah, yeah. No, that would be what that would be.
This was another temporary adjustment that we were trying to do.
Right, I just want to be crystal clear that the non-union people are being frozen, and we don't know what that number is. We don't know if that's a thousand dollar problem or a five thousand dollar problem. And the fair and equitable to all concern, I'd rather cut paper supplies if we need to find five thousand dollars.
No, it wouldn't be, it would be probably about seventy-five thousand dollars.
Seventy-five thousand for non-union?
I'm just guessing with the total increases.
So I'm not talking about the highly, highly paid people. I'm not talking about the police or the fire, well, fire's non-union, the Highway Department. I mean, I don't even think you have twelve people.
Well, no, we have more than that, so two percent is about twenty-five thousand in the police department, so we have double the employee, so it might be, we're going to do step increases. Right, but step increases are more than just cola. So the real.
But I'm talking about the non-union people, the assistant town treasurer, the assistant city clerk, town clerk. Those people are being frozen. And if they took their existing, wherever they are now, and they went up to that next step on the scale, you're, I think you're only talking about twelve people. The PD contract's going to happen.
Right.
So I don't, I don't want that number.
So it's all the others?
The non-union support staff here in Town Hall.
Well, when we did the adjustment in mid-year, that was, what did we have aside from that? Was it just?
No, I can, I can.
That was like twenty thousand or something, right?
Take a percentage.
But we also had people jump to be corrected.
Yeah.
And when? Yeah, not earlier than January.
Right, it took effect in.
So whatever the annual number is going forward, wouldn't we hold off adjusting until January twenty-sixth?
That wasn't the intent, it was to have it be effective at the beginning.
Yeah, we're trying to get people right up on the scale.
Even if we did that, Stephen, we'd need a fifty percent number in this budget to do it.
Yes, but I think Chris is undercutting the point that we did level people up in January.
We got them a first, first leveling.
But we had frozen them for two years while we did the study.
Right.
Exactly. So there was catch-up, and now we don't want to fall behind with the annual increase. But if it's only six months, let's put in the six-month thing, you're not as well.
Or at least at least know what that number is.
Certainly.
So total non-contractual, non-elected is nine hundred and twelve thousand per year?
Who are they? So that happened on that four fifty-six is everybody in that lower section?
And then excluding the Highway and Water Superintendent, we have these salaries.
Well, now, the treasurer, collector, and the town clerk are elected, so they get their adjustments handled nicely.
You're right, sorry.
Not that I would make the same argument, but it really doesn't look.
Yep, so seven eighty-six.
And so percentage?
And what is two percent of that number?
Click right here.
Forty, grace.
No pressure on my Excel skills.
J forty-eight.
Well.
Just multiply by point zero two.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, forty-seven.
Let's take that by two percent.
Seven thousand.
It's got to be, why do you do one? Got a lot of cooks in the kitchen here. Who's going to get this?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand.
So that's basically.
I was way off with something.
So that's good. We're wishing, huh? So that, it's okay, so that's, but that, right now, we, one of the proposed cuts is to take that back and not have that available.
It wasn't built in yet.
Oh, it wasn't even.
Plus that fifteen that is up there, it wasn't even to accomplish that piece.
Right, so normally what would happen is every year with the increases, I'll just bring up one really quick here. So with, let's just take building. So every year with the personnel services, they would move up a step based on performance review every year until they reached the top, and then it would be merit-based after that. So like Ron would move up to F-six next year, whatever that would be. And that would be budgeted within the regular compensation. And then the chart would also move with the cola.
So if we say it's sixteen thousand, round the numbers, and to Stephen's point, their new anniversary date is January for Cal, we're looking for eight thousand.
I would try to tie it in for July first to get back on that.
Well, I don't disagree with you, I mean, I would advocate, and I will advocate, we need to find fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. But where is a different question?
Yeah, okay, well, let's go back to your, your cut list.
I can do that.
To. Include parameters, that would be first step increase. And what we were previously looking for is an ability to, in the face of revised job descriptions, further level people up.
Right.
That's, that's the step after this, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But we don't anticipate having revised job descriptions by July first.
No.
So in theory.
I'm not going to put that on screen.
If next year is our perfect year, and we get free cash certified immediately in September, there's an available revenue source if we don't wait ten months.
Well, if we could control our schedule to do it, that would be good.
I have every faith in you, Chris, that's why I'm voting for you for reelection.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
So this, this is the FI twenty-five chart that we use, so in regular years, it would move up by a cola, so the entire chart would move by one, two, whatever, three percent. And then if you're lower in the scale, you would move up each year as you get more experience until you hit the merit-based.
Right, but just to be, sorry.
What I was going to say is, what, I was going to read what you just said, and that was that these positions had, had a freeze on their increases for two years during that Cal study period, right? And we need to acknowledge, and I'll just repeat what you all believe, is we need to acknowledge the hard work these people put in, and go above and beyond, and waiting, and that's what I hear anyway, and so, sorry, John.
I just want to confirm. So if we have an employee right now who is a G-two, making thirty-three, thirty-one, and I have no idea what that job is, the current proposed budget does not account for them to become a G-three?
That's correct.
Okay.
Or increase the G-two.
Correct, the two percent, yeah.
All right, so we have a question mark in our heads anyway about the wisdom of reducing that one line, fifteen K. That's, that's clear, we're hearing that, I think, from the floor.
I would, just to expand on that a little bit, I would like to see the scenario where I'm okay if we hold everybody in their steps, but if we can apply the two percent adjustment to the scale, keep the scale alive.
Keep the scale going, yeah.
And, you know, obviously, everything has a reaction, what would be the opposite of that?
I would like to try to include elected officials as well, and just trying to get into that pattern of having a base that kind of support them on.
Okay, you want to go back to your other cut list for a minute, and then we're going to jump into the school here before we get going? So these are proposed cuts, but again, they, they don't, they are reflected in your budget, they are, they are already right now? Okay, so question is, do we maybe add back potentially on number one, maybe, question mark, okay. So other things, just want to run down it quick?
The IT capital, the forty-five hundred dollars, we can, with the new grant that we got, we won't need to invest too much in that for this year. So most of it will just be minor stuff. The Health Department, we were going to do the three hours for that they requested in the general budget, but we're going to go back to the septic betterment system, as well as readjust the potential pay for a new person coming in. Concom agent salary was deleted, we moved seventeen thousand from the cemetery request to capital costs, same thing with the parks to capital costs, the tree warden was a six thousand dollar reduction.
Just on that line, Scott, if you know, so last year, we, again, that's a line item that we deliberately doubled. So, and I know our, well, expense reports are up to date, are we actually spending that money? Like, we bumped that, I think we added actually eight thousand.
We added money to it last year, and we've often had to come back at mid-year and add, add money to it.
But I'm thinking we added eight, so if we're cutting six, we're still up two.
I thought we went from fifteen to twelve last year.
We went down?
I think so. I can second check.
Right there. Scroll way too fast. There you go. Oh, we did go down.
Yeah, Ron didn't use the twelve thousand the year before either.
So we're in essence cutting it in half, down to six thousand.
It'll, yeah, it'll get us until hopefully free cash or something. I mean, I don't plan, I wouldn't plan on spending the whole twelve thousand early in the year.
Do we ever use consultants or outside firms to do tree work?
Hundred percent of it.
And so, is it, I mean, with all the windstorms we've had and everything, we haven't used?
Well, Randall would do some of it as well on the public property, like the, right now, Conan Park, he's doing something that had blown down over the, I think, the Brook. So we try to do as much internally.
I also think we only tap into emergencies, we're not proactive.
Like that tree we took down, we did it internally with, I think we had a, I forget who helped with that though, but it was a combination. We took that one out a couple of months ago in front of Town Hall.
Okay.
Waste management reduction. Randall had built, this is, again, we're putting everything to one line, and Randall had built in some extra hours to clean up all the different buildings. So we're trying to do it now. Dave, you can see the pile of chairs out there that used to be in here, so that's all out there now, they're gonna take it in. We're gonna try to do as much as we can on a weekly basis now, instead of doing any designated hours, Dave is just gonna have to, you know, I'll help him out, we'll just kinda get as much out of the basement and here as possible, so. We can afford to reduce that. Building security, that was the $20,000 we would hope to kept on untapping case. Seems like a lot of stuff has been held on with problem properties in case something had happened, boarding up a building, getting special legal counsel, things like that.
That was used a lot this year, but maybe we've kinda gotten to a point where that can kinda cool down a little bit? Maybe we've dealt with a lot of our problem properties?
And then FinCom reserve fund reduced by 25, the health department lowered salary for a new person, and deleted the 2% placeholder for the CBA for, please. We're not gonna get a deal before July 1st anyway, so.
You're not trying to argue?
Well, if it was up to me. The other side of the table, I think, would disagree with my proposal.
Okay, so that's kinda what we're talking about right now, in terms of what you're proposing. So we'll go back, when we have a meeting with FinCom, we'd probably go back over this and just agree or not agree, or discuss and figure out something else, okay? So I guess a challenge would be to see, you know, if we were to say we wanna restore that 15,000 in compensation, where else can we still dig and find 15,000 more?
So to that point, the next paragraph there, where he's talking about health insurance, is specifically why I was asking for that detailed information. So that I can identify on the other side. What that impact might be, or positive effect. You have to do it without the data.
And then, I did look at the things and basically, it would relatively offset our workers' comp costs. Hypothetically.
Yeah.
There's.
Well, there's a formula.
Yeah.
All right, so.
But we're, I'm sorry, we're self-funded. Workers' comp. I mean, not workers' comp, you're talking unemployment.
Unemployment.
I'm sorry.
And you only get unemployment, and you get 75 cents on the dollar.
Good. All right, so back to your budget again, so right now, we're showing a minus eight to get to a level. To get to a balanced budget, but that's getting us only at the 4% for Norris built in right now. So, and it might be 23 by the time we get back there, that we're still short on that stuff. And I think, you know, I mean, I think our challenge on this side, I mean, it's, you know, you kinda cut one position, kinda hobbling together two roles into another position. But, I mean, when you look at our departments around here, there's not a whole place, a lot of places to cut, I mean, we've got a, you know, we've got a two-person town clerk, we've got a three-person treasurer office, we've got a two-person accountant office, like.
I think historically, we've cut. And at some point, we need to stop cutting.
Can only be so lean.
But I don't think we've, I don't think we've gotten rid of people that I'm aware of.
No, but. Good or bad, how many years or a decade have we gone with four open positions at Highway Department? That's the only reason that we're able to fund the winter roads.
I don't disagree.
And now we're gonna actively fill them, which is right for all of our reasons. Well, but that's less money, and we're cutting the 55,000 that we needed to balance the budget, so it's just shifting the burden over to the. Whether we need the money now or we're gonna need the money in a year, because free cash isn't able to afford these, because to your point, free cash is only what we budget and we don't spend. And if we fill all the open positions eventually, whether it takes two years, right, there's not gonna be any more free cash. The 50 bucks here that you saved on paper isn't gonna solve our, what's, winter roads, 107,000 negative, right?
Right.
107.
All right, so where should we go? Should we take a look at the, what Norris is trying to?
Yeah.
Based on what their voting has done?
So I, that leaves up, so I distributed the budget that was given out a couple of days ago. Which is right here, it's also online too. So this is the revised level service as a level one. I'm not an expert in their budget, so I would refer to the school chair.
So that preliminary budget for them though is now 763 rather than the eight that we had on our side?
No.
763, 137 is the request for the override.
No. Well, actually. No, 76, that might be a coincidence, but.
The, this number right here, right, would be the override for level?
This is total long-term revenue. Start with. So the preliminary, the budget approved for Norris, if you start at the top, is 7,291,712 dollars. Of which, there are offsets from the state of 180,000, 038, and that is the school choice tuition, and that's the number on the governor's budget coming in. And then you have the Southampton School Committee, additional 160,000, and I believe that is a combination of the. Utilizing 100% of the foundation reserve, we're at 120, depleting now.
And what does it go for for the school committee? What does it go for for the school committee?
So for reference point, that was awarded during COVID, when we had the massive exit of students going home, dropping out, and then it created a one-year spike in the formula grant, so the legislators went out and did a one-time award to hold harmless those communities. So in theory, that next year, we should have gotten 125,000 in chapter 70 money, and we didn't. So when they did the special award, it came in 125, it's one-time money, we used 25,000 to fund this year's budget. We originally had put 50,000 up for the security enhancement, but then we were able to get the grant, so we didn't spend that. So that's just one-time money, print the full 120, and it's gonna be gone, it won't be there next year, or the year after.
So it's 160, though, right?
No, no, because in the next line, the, if you look under number two in the detail section here, it tells you it's 120 and 40. 40,000 is coming from the preschool revolving fund, which will zero out the preschool fund. So. Which is fine, that's the intent, because the revolving fund comes, preschool receipts come in, they build that back up next year. So that's 160 for that, and then the other offsets of 423,000. So the total non-town revenue that the school committee is putting in collectively is 763,137,000. Which gets us to a general revenue ask of 6,528,575. Which, whatever the expiry.
Which is, so that's the 897,000 difference from last year, 15, almost a 16% increase from last year.
So it would be this right here.
That, 897 would be the request.
Correct, there you go, let me update that.
And that's what the school says they need as level funded, no, level services, right?
Correct, this ask is level service, we remove the district-wide ask for a state position in all schools, so Norris will go without that, and the other schools will do what they need to do. And then it does increase salaries by, I think it's 47,000, what? The offset is a reduction in contractual services by 150,000. And that's the BCBA, where it is, right, that's the BCBA. So right now, we're currently paying for that under contracted services, and that's 150 grand a year, and we're saying we can hire a BCBA in-house at, on the teacher's salary of like 85,000, so. We're gonna get rid of the 150,000 expense, but we're gonna add 85, so we're only seeing a 47,000 savings. Other than that, this is a level.
And just for anybody watching too, to remind us that, you know, we had done, again, the funding through ARPA, this is where we're, we're getting ourselves a little bit caught up, because we had the BCBA person, and we had a special ed teacher, we had some paros.
Five positions.
Five positions altogether, right, most of which are paros, I'm thinking, three, three or four paros, I'm thinking. Anyway, there are two full-time positions, right?
They're all full-time.
Well, okay, but two teachers, two.
Four non-certified and one certified.
Okay, okay.
I believe.
Well, anyway, but the idea was, right, when we, when we decided to fund this for like a couple of years of ARPA money, the idea was that the school was going to be building that program and being able to attract and offer those services, so it could be self-sustaining, right? Where are we in that? Obviously, we're not there yet.
Well, we are, so I would argue we are, and we met our goal, and I think that is not what is causing this problem. 2023 closing of the books is what's causing our problem. There was a change on the town side, there was a change at the regional side, and for some reason, nobody realized that we needed to do an accrual to pay out wages for 700,000.
I agree that, that's not in this budget, that's not even in the ask here, we've taken care of that.
Correct, the cost is still there, we didn't eliminate the cost, it rolled forward, so when 24's budget came in, that was a less of an ask, because it had fallen out to free cash.
But we've got it in free cash that we're gonna, we're gonna pay that, that's not, that's not holding, that's not making the override.
But when, when the money wasn't there, because it fell to the bottom line, it fell to free cash, it didn't get accrued, it didn't get held, those paychecks still had to be issued and paid. So that money came out of next year's budget, it was an unbudgeted expense, which eroded the available funds in there. And it's just been kind of concurring going forward, and Bradley says he's gonna do the correction now to stop that bleed, but you've still gotta restore that 700,000 to the general budget.
I guess I thought that, I mean, that wasn't even part of the reason why we were getting to the, the number for the override, that.
I mean, the 700,000 is gonna be taken from free cash.
Right.
For this year's free cash, it's gonna be subtracted from the 1.2. That we have scheduled, it's only 1.2 because of that 700,000, so that's gonna be taken off.
When you look at the second page, and the reason, I mean, how you get, well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, the second page is, I don't see the numbers that match on that, so. Do you have this electronically, or? So we agree on the approved amount, preliminary, we've got that 7291, okay? Change here, 71, 11%, okay, we see that. So then, where the increases are, the changes are in that last column, oh, next page, Scott.
Yep.
Second page, there we go. Can you make that a little quicker? Get ready, I'm taking a left, there.
The 311,000?
Yeah, so you're.
Contractual increases.
So that's what I just wanna go through, so we've got contractual increases for salaries, we've got.
And 280, so 311 is the contractual increases for the contract, 284, last year's budget had 8,000 in that line item.
That's for spend.
Right, out of district placement and cost, or to avoid it out of district placements, so that's a 284,000 increase.
But is that not one of the programs that we built into Norris now, that should be covering some of its costs? Especially, isn't that?
It, it should be, the objective of the program was to limit and or reduce out-of-district placement.
But I thought also to attract kids that needed it.
That second piece hasn't happened, and that's specifically Williamsburg. Meaning that within the district, Norris has a program designed, so instead of Williamsburg going out of district at 117,000, they could get the services at Norris in theory for less than the ones.
And that was the argument for funding some of this.
Not yet, because we currently have nine children at Norris that are in that program.
Oh, I see, so. Are you able to drop from the outside?
Well, potentially. I don't know, I don't know what the cap number is, I just know that there are definitely nine students at Norris participating in this program. At a cost of whatever the, 231,000 for the support staff, that if the support staff wasn't there.
I got it, but I, looking at that page again, Scott, I don't know where you're at, Scott, would you go back there too? So what I'm trying to understand, just scroll over to the left a little more, there you go. So that is your biggest chunk, it's 82% of what you're asking for is the spend cost.
Yep.
That's the hugest request, and then some for the central office, 20% for the central office, what, contribution from Norris to the central office, is that what that is?
Correct. 92,000, which is for the forensic study, work to continue to go, that should fall off.
And was that doing a percentage among all the school, all the districts, I mean, all the towns?
55% Southampton.
How come that's in the Norris budget, though, wouldn't it just be?
Because it's a central office cost, central office gets divided and out to the, it's in the Norris, it's in the elementary piece.
Okay, but it wouldn't just be in our regular assessment?
All right, so that's where the change is coming from, is 300,000 in contractual increases, so staff salaries basically, and then the whole spend tuition, that's your biggest chunk of this.
Right, and that increase in services is required, is what the existing IEPs that are in force that were required to provide?
Yeah, Chris, it feels so dramatic, because it, it was budgeted at 8,000 last year, and we spent more than that. And so that's, it's kind of the nature of.
Now, one of the positives is we'll be available, we will be able to apply for a circuit breaker, which is extraordinary cost associated to special education, that is above and beyond what they say our threshold is, however, it's a year in arrears coming to us. Which is reflected on the first page, if you look under the circuit breaker numbers, one year we got 183, 2025, there's a, there's a balance in that account left, which is why we're using that. And then this year, we're anticipating, we believe our subject, it's gotta be audited, right now, our placeholder is sitting at 155, that we're gonna get, but it's subject to audit.
In FY25, 24, there was nothing, I'm sorry, now 20, sorry, 183 in FY24?
Yep.
And 25 you're waiting on right now, because it's gotta be audited, and you're estimating 153, is that what you said?
150, it's like the fourth line from the bottom.
Okay, 26, that's for 26.
Yeah.
So 25 is what?
Twenty, a portion of 25 got allocated into the 24 budget, into that 183. So there was a balance, because you're supposed to, you have one year to use it, that's the balance in that account, have to reconcile, so it's being applied to the budget, and you can't carry it forward. We don't apply it, we gotta write a check and turn it back, yeah.
So historically, the Norris school budget was 5.4 and.
But you're looking at the general number, you need to look at the total ask.
Okay.
Because in other years, we've been at, like last year, or this year we're in right now, we put in just about a million dollars in other revenue. So it drives down the, if you're only looking at the general fund number, you know, as funding dries up, the general fund number is gonna creep back up to that 7.2. Yeah, because last year, this current budget we're in, we put 931,000 of other sources, now we're down to 763.
And that's because you've got new revenue estimates from state or other grants?
Federal fund, Title I are being restricted. Maybe there next year, may not be, I mean, these, these numbers we have the award letters for, so as long as the award letters are honored.
Yeah. Stephen?
I think it's very dire situation whether the commitments will be altered. So I don't, we keep looking for places to cut, because I think that we will be pushed towards 7.3.
I guess my question is, we said this is the level funding, which is, hold it to my words, like bare bones.
Level services.
Level services. Level services.
Correct.
Thank you. So they've, they've looked at this budget and said, this is as low as they could possibly go in function? Is that the same term, or no?
Yeah, so level service is you're providing, you're meeting all your contractual obligations, that way you currently have. Level funded is, you're hitting the same dollar amount, now you gotta cut something, because you can't, and then you got the reductions.
So, yeah, it sounds like, what we're gonna, I think what we're gonna have doing is have two requests from the, from the school, right? We'll have one where we're gonna bring forward some type of override to help them, or to meet their needs, and then also, if the, if the override doesn't pass, what, what does that look like? Or do they?
Well, from what they've said, is the reduction in personnel.
Right, so this is the only budget coming forward. Because if, if this doesn't pass, then it's, okay, what's this like we're gonna put up? And I believe the token place holder right now is a 4.05%.
Right, I mean, we don't think we can cut any more than that.
I don't disagree.
So I think that's.
But at a 4.05, that's a, that's a 10 FTE reduction to Norris.
Of which, how many are full-time?
Six and a half are certified, which means teacher credential.
Teachers.
And then three and a half are non-certified, well, they're.
There may not be parents necessary.
Support staff.
Oh, there's support staff, yeah.
Which may or may not include terras or.
Got it.
Which may or may not include terras or custodians or...
Yeah. I mean, I think when, when we put this together, I mean, Scott and I were looking at figures, I mean, we were saying that the most we could think about would be another percent or two, you know, maybe we could get up to 6%, but there's no way we can, we can possibly meet 15%.
If you have to scrape by to find the 15,000?
Yeah.
We can't find 900,000.
So, I mean, I, you know...
There is, there is 800,000 on the town side. On the, on the non-school departments, there's not 870,000 of that list of budget.
No, I know. That's what I'm saying.
When is the, going to be the effective case to cut those positions, those certified and other positions, increase classroom size, or...
Well, for the first year, will we, well, will, as soon as they're cut, we'll be in violation of the union contracts that have, have stated levels of children in the classroom, so we will exceed...
Per age, per level.
Right. We can, we can get by that for one year, because it wasn't planned or anticipated. The second year, by the way, we're up for negotiations. The second year, we, we can't argue that it wasn't planned, because we print forward, this is one of the reasons why this is the budget that came forward. The school committee has printed forward a budget that meets the needs of the existing school staff and contractors. So, school committee can't print forward another budget that's less than this.
There's no fact in this whatsoever.
Can I say something about that?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mark.
So, according to our contract, we are not to exceed 30 students in a classroom, and...
Well, we can't go by 25 unless there's a reason, and then 30, is the drop-in number.
So, this would put us between those two numbers, and in the future, it's possible that we would get further above 30.
What's our, what's our average size classes now?
Right now? It's in the 18...
18 to 22, I think.
But, there's more children, fifth and sixth grade class average is higher, that is a symptom of that. And also, we have...
Any kind of trouble of students coming in as well?
There are 48 kindergarten children coming in right now. It's the largest inbound class we've ever had. We have, there's two kindergarten classes.
Wow.
So, on top of that, the 25 to 30, right? So we're gonna be above the 25, but we'll be under the 30. One of these new houses being developed, if there's twin third graders coming in, shoots that classroom right away. I mean, it's, and we have to take them, we can't say no. We can shut down school choice, but that has to be phased out over time, because all existing children in and of right now have to be able to continue, it's not like we can send them back to their community. And under school choice, if there's a sibling, you gotta bring them in too.
And how many, do we know how many we have in school choice?
48.
38.
48.
48 in school choice.
At $5,000 a piece.
And it costs...
That gets you, that gets you your school, your school choice revolving account.
Right, and it costs us more than $5,000 to educate a kid, right?
Well, it does, but in theory, we're only bringing in school choice children to fill out the existing classroom, and there shouldn't be additional expense. In theory.
Who pays the school choice tuition?
It's the sending school.
The sending school.
So if it comes from East Hampton, then that school pays for it, and they are also supposed to be billed for special ed costs associated with that particular child. So we are, we are not on the hook for special ed costs when a student comes in.
Can those costs go, can those invoices go up, and we charge...
Set statewide.
Statewide, yeah. Does that include, excuse me, Chris, does that include transportation?
They have to provide transportation.
They have to provide their own transportation.
And then 5,000 hasn't been adjusted in...
Oh, no.
Forever.
Forever.
And what is, what is there a...
But John's point is accurate, that if you have 20 students in a classroom, and you're adding three school choice students, you are not...
We're not adding a teacher, we're not adding a parent.
You're adding additional costs associated with that.
Right. The school choice coming in are not necessarily all those that might need an IEP though, right?
No.
No, so they could be just, somebody moved and they like this school better than the other one or something. So, is there a limit on the number of school choice that Norris has set that they will not exceed?
Yes, we run on it every year.
Okay.
By grade.
By grade. So the total though, right now, is 48, or 48 there?
Right, so divide that by seven grades, to come out with the average impact per grade.
So does that mean that we actually have a little more buffer in the number of towns' people that we can have in town? Can we push the school choice people out if we need guys to...
Can't, can't push them out, you can shut it down, and then eventually it'll phase itself out.
So maybe that's something we should talk about, because we're, I feel like we're getting a capacity for our school. It's a whole other subject, but that may be a way to alleviate around, I don't say 10%.
Well, I mean, we take a seven-year cycle.
Yeah, I mean, the towns, towns opt into the whole school choice, because they're getting some revenue, right, the $5,000, but in reality, we know that's, what, a third of the cost to educate that same student?
But there, there's no extra cost, Chris.
It's marginal cost.
Because if you have, if we have 15 towns' children in first grade, we're providing a teacher and a parent already. So to add two more students and pulling $10,000, we're not adding another parent or teacher, again, in, in theory. Is there more supplies?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
If we get to a point where it, it appears as if we're getting above that 25 mark, then we absolutely would look at future, which is why we, we will be very cautious about our incoming kindergarten class, we can perceive this bubble, and that bubble follows them, and they go to the high school, and they have the same calculation at the high school.
And this year, we're only allowing two to come in, and it's because their siblings are already in the school.
Right.
So our hands are tied.
With school choice.
But there's no additional school choice coming in. And there's more than two graduate, transferring up to middle school, right, sixth grade, moving up to seventh.
And I would, I would say, this is, we have this conversation every year, that our legislature tends to ignore what happens in western Georgia State. So there was just the Good Ways and Needs Committee meeting at UMS Monday before last, and they said, well, we, we will increase circuit breaker, and that will help with everything, but it doesn't. First of all, that is delayed by a year, and then it doesn't assist us with other issues that we have. We're not getting rural aid increased dramatically, we're not getting our transportation increased dramatically, you know, so that helps a population, but not the school as well.
Right. Well, it's a tough one, I mean, you know, I don't know, at this point in time, so tell us what our next steps are. At some point, we've gotta vote on what we're putting forth on the warrant, right?
Right, so, so there's a couple different steps. The more pressing issue is the ballot questions going on the May 20 municipal election. The select board has to vote on that, and only the select board can approve it for special elections to go before the vote, special questions go before the voters. So that gives us, at the latest, April 15, to vote on it, the actual language that's gonna be going forward, so I can give that to the town clerk.
And that would be the question about the override in particular?
Either the override or the public safety.
Right, so it would have been originally, based on our town meeting, where we had gotten that level of approval and determining whether that passes at the ballot box, right? But the intent had been to put the 3.2 million as a debt exclusion on the ballot.
Yep.
In May.
So for the override, it's kind of the back, the opposite of how we did the public safety, so we went to town meeting first, got the approval for the debt exclusion, and then the select board would have to vote to put it on the ballot. Now, it would be the opposite, where the select board is essentially putting a placeholder on the ballot, and then going before town meeting. Town meeting would have to approve the original budget, and then any additional Prop 2.5 increases, and then it would go to the voters.
So do you see us presenting two budgets at town meeting? I mean, the budget that we're working on, and then the override.
There's a couple different ways to do it. You can present two budgets, one with and one without the override. If one passes, then you can over, pass over the other one.
Thinking of what we did with the fire department, I think, a couple years ago, when we did the fire.
That was the Hampshire Regional School Budget. One voted it down.
No, no, the one that passed, where we, we had a similar issue for the fire, because I think we had two budgets on there, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. The, the other way that, I was talking to Michelle, the town council, so the other way that you can do it is, you can do the base budget, and then the next article would be the asking for the money for the override. So the difference that you would ask for the override for, the additional 897,000.
I, I would argue that we do, we don't do it that way, because we've never done it that way. It's always been, here's the override first, and then if that doesn't pass, then we've gotta work on, we've gotta go to the next one. Versus, let's try and pass something without the override, and then, it, it doesn't make any sense, and it's not how we've been transparent in the past.
But what you were saying was, you wouldn't present, on the second question, you wouldn't present the entire budget again, you'd only present the 897,000 as the override, as Article 2, or whatever. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
I don't know, it's a tough one, I mean, you know, I, John, I've said this to you before, that, you know, you know, having been on both committees, on both the building and, building committees for public safety and senior center, and, you know, we've already pushed senior center back a bit, because public safety's come along with their needs, and feel that those are ones that we wanted to keep on moving, and if we don't put that on the ballot now, then that pushes them to another, at least six months beyond. And it's been, you know, a whole lot of expectation and work done on that too. So I feel very torn in terms of where to go with this.
Stay towards and do better education, but I wanna circle back to the override number. My understanding is that in our draft budget, we provide 4% increase.
Right.
But we're carrying the total increase here over the year as the number for the override. Why wouldn't it be reduced? Because we've already anticipated for looking for 16.
I think, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, unlike the public safety or senior center, where we might go for a debt exclusion, that's, that was our intent, to go for debt exclusion, which is meaning that that increase is only on the tax rolls until, until it's paid off, so it'd be a longer borrowing.
Completely different question.
But for the school, this would be a permanent tax increase to your taxes.
I understand.
Okay.
Not the issue that I raised at all.
All right, go ahead.
Let me start over. How did you derive the number for the school override?
Uh, that's from the school department.
So you took, on this, on this first page?
It's a year-on-year difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How does that total number compare to the number you're already carrying in your budget?
It's 15% difference?
It's short. I think the difference is less...
897, 897,000.
So 15, 60% difference.
Because, Stephen, the number he's carrying on the budget is, is Norris plus vocational plus transportation.
But Stephen...
No, 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 on, on this.
Yes, that's what I'm addressing.
This is a count-down number. This number for Norris here is that Norris number, plus 385,000 transportation, plus 60,000 for vocational transportation, plus the million one for Smith. You gotta add all four of those numbers to get to Scott's number. You're not gonna find the other numbers on the Norris budget, because they're not part of Norris's budget per se.
So the actual town school budget is this right here.
The fact that it doesn't foot his challenge.
So his number on his summary sheet is matching this here. So that's showing that instead of, instead of a 5.6, which is the expiring budget, right, for the general fund?
Right.
Yeah.
A 4.05% increase gets you to 5.8, but the school needs the 6.5 to get there. So if you, if you change...
Yeah, so, six...
Five, two, eight, five, seven, five.
And that brings the 897 up there.
And does that, does that automatically feed to your summary sheet?
Uh, it should.
2%.
I have a problem with some of the formulas with the requests.
Well, that's why I wanted to go over it, and so it's opaque about what I was saying.
No, no, that's fine, that's all.
The questions are good.
Yeah, that's what all gets built into it, yeah. While you're looking for that, Scott, I'm, I'm just looking at the, just to refresh our brains, the warrant for May 23, town meeting, and we presented the regular budget first, annual operating budget, then the override for the operating budget was the article right after that. So we did do that, and that was the one that did pass, I believe.
Pass for the fire department?
I'm just checking the language on that right now. It was a 19,700 budget for our basic budget, all municipal departments and schools, and then the supplemental operating budget, general override article, was 332,555 for basically the fire department EMS, yeah. So that was an article after the, after the main budget, yeah.
So it's a little different, where it was discretionary to increase EMS staffing as compared to contractual obligation of the school.
That override was to add services, this override is to prevent the cuts.
When was the last time we did an override on the school?
It had to be two years before that, because there was one, it was before I got on the...
Because there was one that failed in between.
The last override was 2021, it failed for 718,000.
But that was the combined.
That was a combined, so it had to be before 21.
There was, Stephen, the longest one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To me, it makes sense to put this as the first, informous question in front of them. Do they want to fund this extra money for the school?
I'm also in favor of printing both questions up. I mean, I understand your logic on not doing it, but, I understand your logic for not printing both questions up at the same time, but to me, they're two separate arguments. One, one is, you know, the school, and again, depending on how we do it in process, do we want to maintain the level of service that we have? This is the number in order to do it. Boom, boom, boom. The debt, and, and that's an override. The debt exclusion is a one-time, yes, it'll run 30 years, but we're not gonna borrow that money, we can't borrow that money, the way the wording is, until 2027, 2028 at the earliest.
For public safety.
Right, because we said to them, we want to get approval, but we're not gonna touch this 3.2 until we come back with the whole number, and that gets approved.
Which we were hoping to do in the fall, so that our borrowing would be in the middle of calendar 26.
But to me, approve, my vote to approve the 3.2 million is just green light. I know as a taxpayer, it's not gonna cost me a cent to vote for that, because you're not allowed to borrow until you come back with a full ask, and that's when my vote's gonna be important, as to whether or not I want to. A yes vote on the 3.2 is a ceremony.
So you're saying that you wouldn't object to having both questions on the ballot?
I personally wouldn't, but it's all messaging.
I think it's an assisting too, yeah.
Yeah, right, fully agree. I mean, do you follow me, where even, even if, even if we get 100% vote for the 3.2, it still doesn't mean the public safety compromise is gonna happen, because, and it's not gonna happen. But we come back and it's a $98 million ask, that's gonna get shot down, and then we're done. Versus, the 897 is, this is gonna happen immediately. If this doesn't pass, these 10 spots are gone, here's the impact.
The more pressing issue is the school override. If we didn't vote for the public safety in, in May, we would still have to wait till the, the fall anyways, for the full amount. I'm just wondering, what would the perception be if it were to fail, the 3.2 were to fail?
That's the, that's the risk. Now, the lady, we'd already heard at the town meeting, special town meeting, there was a portion, a minority after the vote, but of the vote, there was a portion that wanted to see the whole thing before they were asked to vote on it.
So can I ask a question?
Certainly, why not? You've been sitting here very attentively, thank you. Could you, just give us your name.
Oh, and voted, covered, and all of them. Has anything like this happened, happened before? And what was the vote? What was, how did people react? How did?
Well, when there was an override that, for the entire town, that got chopped down. Because every, in theory, everybody had one piece they didn't like. Prior, which I think Lucy thinks it was sometime around 2018, there was an override just for the school, and that passed.
Based on it, it was like 23 people that voted against the, about 23 people that voted.
Voted against on the public safety, that's true.
And I forget what the number was that voted for it. How does that compare to when something like that happened in the past and actually went to vote? Does that percentage stay?
It's hard to say, I think, because there's a lower turnout in a town meeting or a special town meeting. And so then, you know, you don't know who's going to come and vote at the ballot box.
Well, land acquisition would be the closest.
Yeah, we had a pretty good turnout for that, and that was, you know.
And were the percentages above the same, or were they?
What, the ballot was only 60/40. Yeah, town meeting was almost unanimous, but the ballot was about 60/40.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So that tells you maybe this would be the same. I don't know.
Yes, can I ask a question?
Yeah, Dan.
Is, say we got, this was approved for 3.2 million. Do, we wouldn't get, the town wouldn't get any funding for anything at that point, right? So it's kind of ceremonial.
For the public safety.
The way we worded the question.
The way it was worded, right. We told people that we were only going to go for, we need to put it on the ballot. But the actual borrowing was not going to happen until we had the full cost. And the purpose of that was to spend these six months with this, without the money, we can still get all the preparatory work done for the architectural stuff. And then go out to that in late, in late fall, after we have a special town meeting, where we would hopefully put the choose.
So we got what we wanted to learn from it, which is the town supports enough for us to continue on, not pulling any funds, and then go to the next meeting and do the real vote that matters. Like, well, you shouldn't waste anybody's time with this one because it doesn't matter, right? We already, we already as a town voted or made a choice, talked about this.
So you would recommend not putting it on this ballot for 3.2 million?
It doesn't, it doesn't have any meaning.
So waiting until the fall to put the entire cost, though, not just the 3.2 million, but that plus the.
What we do have, we have, the town has, through vote, said that they want to continue working on this project in the meantime, which is what we will do.
Yeah, but Scott, where does that leave you in procurement world?
So it would take us probably about 30 to 60 days anyways after the May 20 vote to start getting the RFPs together, to get everything ready together. It's going to take Jen, you know, a couple of weeks, 30 to 60 days before she can start borrowing. So that's going to bring us until September anyways for the big town meeting vote. So we would start with the RFPs regardless whether or not we would do the May 20 question on the ballot for the 3.2. Well, we can do, just a lot of work that we can do to get ready for it.
Which couldn't put the RFP on the street.
We could even.
You could, you could put a clause there, subject.
Subject to availability of funds.
So really, it doesn't matter if it's not on the May ballot, and it's just the override.
One of the things that we split it up that I didn't mention was, we literally just got the plans and the numbers weeks ahead of special town meeting. So we had to schedule a special town meeting in the hopes of actually receiving the new cost estimate, the new designs, and thankfully, we did. So it really wouldn't have been enough time, those couple of weeks, to put a $28 million question before the voters.
In terms of educational.
And we just wouldn't, I mean, it's a little bit, you know, 3.2 is a little bit more understanding. It's soft costs, it's architectural, it's engineering, we have to do it by the state. We have to do these things to have the bigger question, it just would have been impossible.
And that's why there's not enough time to do the education you need for that large request between now and this vote we're talking about.
So that, that will mean a huge educational effort between now and the fall to push for the, whatever it is, 28,000 or whatever for the full.
28,000?
Public, uh, 28.
20,000.
I wish, 28 million-ish therefore for, for the public safety, and then figure out what we're doing on the senior center, too.
True, true.
Yes, sorry.
The last override was in 2017 with the school only, for 110,000. I'm looking to see if it passed.
So either way, whether we put the 3.2 on now or we wait till the fall, public safety is going to be on the fall ballot. It's either the cumulative or it's the second portion, right?
Right.
And then when were you anticipating? Scott, when are you anticipating printing on the ballot your million dollar capital raise question?
Last year. Everything, I mean, because the initial, or remember that the initial public safety came in closer to 40. So this special town meeting was supposed to be like six months ago.
I'm talking about earlier, you were talking about infrastructure.
Right.
Trucks and cruisers and fire trucks, capital.
I'd be doing it right now.
For a fall vote?
Probably, yeah.
So.
But that was, that was if the public safety complex went six to nine months ago, like it was scheduled to with the initial feasibility study. But the feasibility study came in too much, so we had to spend the next six months.
And then you throw the COA in there, so we're talking about the next three town meetings are all going to have override questions on.
They're not all overrides, a little bit of debt exclusions.
Additional ask for.
Yeah, and I mean, the senior center one is going to be more like, what, 10 to 12 million or something? It's half the cost.
I think that's 10.9.
10.11 million. So, I mean, comparatively, it's less, obviously, because of the building.
When do you expect that ballot to be, in the November ballot?
If we had, I mean, I think it would be difficult to have any special town meeting or vote in the summertime. Everyone's, no one's really paying attention. It would be nice if we could get the, working backwards from the election, so most people expect an election in early November. So if we were going to work backwards 35 days, we'd have to have it no later than mid-September.
So you have a special town meeting, and then you have the vote in November.
Yeah, there's no regular election in this November, right? So Lucy, you said that, that one in 2017 did not pass, or?
I have to look at my notes.
Do you know, was it a special or a town meeting or a?
It was a special.
Special.
I think.
Okay, that's fine. So I guess that, you know, I don't know, do we need to decide that tonight? Or we still need to think about it for another week or so?
No, I mean, you could, if you wanted to, you could just let the 3.2 million expire and just never call for it. But if you are to put something on the ballot, you do have to take the affirmative. So you have to vote on it by April 15.
So April 15, we've got to vote to put the override question on the ballot.
Do we have the wording already from KP Law? We do, so there's not going to be any additional expense?
So which one are you talking about, the 3.2 or two?
3.2, that 3.2, there won't be any additional expense if we get, if we wait till Tuesday night and get way of financials. I mean, it's not like there's more work that needs to be done. If we're going to print out a ballot, we're ready to go. We have the documentation and the affirmative vote that we need to take.
Yeah.
That was a special town election for the override.
Check that out there. So were you talking about, I don't know what else you were going to show us, Scott? But one of the things I wanted to clarify, and I asked Scott to clarify this, John, because I was confused about why people were thinking on social media that the money we get from the school is not going to the school. Because all of our state aid, chapter 70 money, definitely goes to the school.
It does, how?
Because we only get 2.7 million, and that's not even the cost of the vocational transportation. All the money goes to.
Well, transportation doesn't count. It's, no, I mean, yes, it's there.
But the total bill of the school.
I mean, the 2.7 million chapter 70 funding is part of the net school spending calculation, which does include vocational. It does not include any transportation. And it does not include adult educational services, which wouldn't apply here anyway. So there's a few things it doesn't. So you take the general fund ask plus the 2.7, this particular budget coming up, and that number combined has to get to the net school spending. We don't know what our net school spending is because we can't file our reports. But net school spending, you also need to calculate out the cost of the health insurance for the teachers, which need that sheet in order to do it. You do not count retirement contributions. I mean, there's, there is a whole list in there that gets there. Now, you won't find chapter 70 fund comments related undermining on social media. And some of those other individuals, I have no idea who they are, what their background is, or what they're posting. But those same people believe we're already on the hook for 3.2 million.
Right, and so, and so we've come together tonight. That's, this is the first public sort of notification about having to make a choice on that, right? You know, but I think, you know, I just don't want to have the assumption out there that all the money coming in from chapter 70 doesn't go to the school, that it gets siphoned off to highway or police or whatever.
No, you have to, you have to show the calculation. And that's what I'm trying to get, if I can get the data out of this town hall. But in this case, you need to wipe, you need to zero out transportation.
Okay, so to take out the 481?
Because the, yeah, because then the, well, you take out Hampshire Regional as well. Because again, when you're trying to, you take the chapter 70 funds for Southampton, that's strictly pre-K through six. Hampshire Regional gets its own chapter 70 funds, which uses to offset the ultimate ask of Southampton to do it. So it's the Norris school expenses minus transportation, plus vocational, minus vocational transportation, minus benefits related to retirement for certified positions. So those that are actually on the county retirement, like the paras and the support staff, those would be added. And then the health insurance costs.
Which we pay anyway, right?
Yeah, but you need to add those numbers up. Minus out the general fund appropriation. And then if that number is greater than the school, the chapter 70 number, you're good. If it's less, then there's, there's a funding issue. Because you have to spend your, you have to meet that net school spending number.
Right.
And we need, we need, part of our work that we need to do is we need to calculate that number.
But we do meet our net school spending, historically, we always have.
It's not on file right now, because we haven't turned in any reports. So to prove this to the public, you go to the decision, it's not there. Last year was there.
So where did the reports come from, John? I mean, who initiated?
Town accountant.
So it's just a matter of timing, and in all previous cases, we've met that.
I won't swear to that, because I haven't gone back and done the math myself.
I guess it all comes down to, you know, we don't want to be conducting town business through social media. And these people are friends and our neighbors in this town. We invite them to come to this meeting, have discussions openly, where we can look at the data.
I just want to acknowledge that there's a perception there that, you know, money is going all over the place. And I don't think that's quite honest.
I think doing the exercising, exercise, create the document, and then shine the light on the truth versus.
Because I think in reality, you know, we know that, you know, as with most towns, I mean, I think our school budget is, you know, easily 60% of our total town monies. I mean, that's the reality for just about everybody.
And in most cities or towns, you know, the transportation, all that stuff is usually built into the other side of the school budget. Usually the city or town may or may not necessarily pay for that part.
I don't know about that, but, so, okay.
Well, again, the reason why school transportation was pulled out of schools in Southampton was because at some point in the early 90s, Southampton did not meet its net school spending. And they didn't want to make that mistake again, so they pulled out that number, so they knew that not to count it.
So out of this list here, we'd have to take out, you're saying take out Norris and, I'm sorry, take out Regional and transportation.
And then a portion, I mean, benefits is a broad term. That's, including the retirement contributions, that's got to be thinned down.
John, it seems we've expanded beyond the agenda item. And I think between the town administrator and the accountant, maybe with some reinforcement from you, we get the right reports on file. We are not going to be responding to Facebook comments.
Great, yeah. I would request that if they want that information, they request it through the town, not request it through a post on any social media site. We don't have to respond to social media.
Well, we're confident that we have an appropriate answer, but we can't provide it.
Right, and we're not allowed to talk outside of the meeting.
But I think it's, it really is a staff issue at this point. We've identified it as a policy issue and we move on.
But if we, as a board, agree that, that the education of our students cannot tolerate the cut of the staff, if we are accepting that, we don't have much of a choice than to fund this 897,000 dollars. And that's kind of a question, as much as anything. Are we as a board accepting this? Do we think they did their due diligence? There's no "that" on that at all. There's no other way to make it less.
We don't have purview over that.
Well, no, I know, but if I'm going to agree to vote to say we should put this on the ballot, then I have to feel comfortable with that. That's just me, one vote.
Right, well, I mean, the question was, do you trust the other five elected officials that have oversight over this? Step credit forward.
Do I trust any of it? Yes, exactly, yes, the school board and.
Yep, well, and I think at this point in time, I think we decided, right, that we want to wait and have a joint meeting with finances and see what they have to say as well.
Or how many is guaranteed?
Yeah, so we will, so that we won't, we won't take any more of it.
And will finance have any new, are there going to be any more reports, new reports coming out that, will be available when we meet with the finance committee next Tuesday? Or not necessarily, there won't be anything new to it?
I sent out the email, I think Doug had replied, but I haven't heard back from.
Becky replied.
Oh, Becky's good, she's good.
They'll be there.
Okay, so Becky and Doug?
But in terms of any new information, the only thing we know we might.
Oh, yeah, Doug's able to make it.
We might have would be the vocational.
Right, right now, there's an 80,000 buffer in there.
Right, 12% in there already.
So that would mean, right. But, I'm sorry, but they can't just raise the rate. If they haven't taken a vote to increase the rate, it's the rate that it was last year. If there's not a token placeholder in there, which they should be able to answer that question quickly, because they have to go through local processes. But on the other hand, that means, say that's true. That means we can increase the rules by four and still be within that budget number. And I don't think there's going to be that big of a swing between, you know, exiting students and incoming students.
Process-wise, is the school budget going to be revised, even if it needs to be corrected in small?
Well, if there's a calculation error, that's different.
Okay, but it's not for us to question it. It's what, contractually, the town is obligated to, but for the need for an override.
Correct. It's, civil services with that one exception that we're dropping.
So we're 100% behind this. We're going to bring the override question to the voters. It's part of our job.
I think it's up to those people, the town's people, to make such a large decision.
Is that what everybody agrees to, that we should?
I'm just talking, I'm just saying my opinion.
Oh, I think, yes, I think if you're, if we're considering the alternative would be not put through, and for this board to sanction a reduction of 10 FTEs at Norris, I would say that that is not our purview, that we were not elected to make that decision on behalf of the whole town.
So therefore, we should put it on the ballot and allow the town to vote.
That we put both budgets on the ballot?
Yes, because.
At the town meeting or?
Right, because if the override doesn't pass, there needs to be something.
And I think we still have some question on if we want to put the public safety building on there or not.
Yeah, so I think that can be our, part of our topic when we get together with finance, and that can be on Tuesday. So we've got a couple more agenda items, unless there's anything else on the budget. Let's, let's move on and see if we can finish up on our couple of agenda items.
Oh, and there was the error on the, this, sorry. I sent, this is actually the lesser number, so I'll redo it. Yeah, so it's actually 355.
So 355 would be the tax impact on the average household for the override. 355 dollars per year over.
Eighty dollars a quarter.
That's basically your average civil family asset value percentage.
Yes.
Scott, we could be asking that.
Okay, so gosh, all right, well, this is, you know, it's a tough spot. We're in a, you know, it's not going to get any easier in terms of budget-wise here, but. I think it would be helpful, John, I know you've got this formulaic in your head in terms of how to get to the net school spending, but if we can just be sure that both Bradley and Scott have that in writing somehow, so we know what, so they know what they're doing.
Yeah, and there is a form that Bradley fills out and sends them to get certified. But these other forms need to be done in order for him to get to do that. They've got to kind of close the books.
Right, and so where are we? We were listening, we were waiting on one grant for reconciliation, no, from Norris.
So Don, this morning, confirmed that the 717 was the correct number. So we were able to write that off, and then there's just that one question on the grant that we're going to probably resolve.
Write it off?
Potentially, I don't know. We're meeting on Monday to go over everything.
So we're going to, we're erasing 700,000?
No, no, you're saying it's done, you mean by done.
It's completed.
It's completed.
Yeah, 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 so that number is the right number. So we were waiting to make sure the number didn't change, so that number's been confirmed.
It's a closed issue.
The CFO.
It's a closed issue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm writing it off the list.
Yes.
Checking it off the list.
Checking it off the list.
And then we just have one grant we got to do.
It was a question of about 95,000 on a grant that needed reconciliation, and that's all we've been still waiting for. And with that, Bradley can finish doing his thing, but he can't, you know, as much as we say, you know, we're behind, we can't move on certain things.
For the record, I completely agree, Bradley is moving as fast as he can. There are just outside forces that seem to come up every year, and every year, we seem to get a lot of them.
Well, and try to, you know, disentangle some of this grant money from the schools.
I think on Monday, when they meet, one of the, one of the options on that 95, that negative 95,000, because it's reimbursable, they have to ask for it, is that we just take the credit on the arrears that's owed. And then when they get it, they'll clear it up on their end, instead of us having to front the money.
That would be nice.
Which, if they issue that invoice, I think that's what the proposal on Monday is going to be, to close that issue.
Okay.
And then really the only other thing that we had was just the enterprise funds that we closed out, and we're all set with those, so just the indirect cost, and that's really about it on the town side.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, let's, let's move ahead on the last couple of issues on the agenda here. We do have one small thing I think we have to deal with in, be very short, in executive session. Capital Committee, you've already talked about that.
We're trying to get a Zoom meeting, I think everyone's been confirmed, for Thursday at 4 o'clock. I'm going to get all the applications ready to send out probably tomorrow. We'll love to talk about the heating system thing a little bit more next week. We'll probably bring it around, but, yeah, so like I've mentioned before, it'll be a few cruisers, a truck for the fire department, a few, I guess the middle capital stuff, small and middle, nothing major.
Water Department have any capital requests?
They are enterprise, so they would be able to raise it themselves.
With no coordination?
Not, well, technically, yeah. Not, well, technically, yeah, town meeting votes on their budget, but, uh, yeah, no, they, they're, they have a lot more flexibility, let's just put it that way.
As much as our transfer station, as long as they can collect receipts.
Well, yeah.
Put that cabinet...
It's a little bit, a few more zeros in the transfer station.
There it is.
So...
All right, land planning update, have we had another meeting since, I don't know when, no, since our last?
No, I think...
There should be another public forum coming up soon, or?
Well, it's coming up in several weeks, but we're, we're lacing the schedule a little bit, because we don't have to put articles on the, to the extent we anticipated. We had the contract contact meeting with the planners, we know that they've been brainstorming based on the input from the community meeting, as well as all the committee meetings prior to that.
Do we have a sense of what we've got in for surveys and all yet? How much?
Yeah, survey closes the end of the week, thank you for your advertising, and so there is a project team meeting trying to get scheduled for early next...
Probably April 14th, I just got the email from Kyle.
Right, I was seeing that come through. Now, that would include some of our committee chairs, the committee of the willing, that's eight or so people. But, um, did you get slides, did Scott, you get slide, she get slides?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, that's why, I think I forwarded to the select board the, the slides that we met over.
Yeah.
Just as a...
Zero call check?
Mm-hmm, yes, just some, you know, rough drafts that Peter had done, so just to...
30 slides, about half of who was still analysis and housing brought forward previously, a little bit new, but then a very rich, almost too rich set of possible scenarios.
Yeah.
And from that, then Randall and Scott and I, and I, again, give feedback on what we liked.
Okay.
And then we also forwarded the, the synopsis of the, the visioning thing, so...
And so the public, the next public workshop would be after town meeting.
Yeah, we're going to delay it till after town meeting, there's too much stuff going on.
A lot to try and pull into the same...
That's a couple of months now, right? Or six, six weeks.
Yeah, I mean, you could do it between town meeting and election, too, you could do it...
Yeah, I think we're going to wait till, at the very least.
Until mid-May.
For no particular reason, but yeah.
I mean, that would be a timeframe, yeah, okay, sounds good. All right, just very briefly, on the agenda, 250th, things are moving along, had a great pancake breakfast, had a great hike, I think we talked about that. Um, the next one is actually Saturday over at the library, Corden Pavilion, actually. The 3rd Massachusetts Regiment is coming to visit and do a little demonstration, definitely a reenactment, but some things around the Revolutionary War, so Johanna's been coordinating that, and we've got a schedule up on the town website, there'll be another hike at Clearwater, Woodland on the 12th, I think it is, and on the 22nd, we're aiming to do a Earth Day litter pickup, and we're waiting on Randall just to give us a definitive location. He wanted to be sure that we had a, a good place to park, so that we were not, you know, having kids running around all over the place, so we may, may do that around the school area and go up to Palmer Meadow or somewhere there, just to check that out, but we're still working on that one. Minutes to approve, we have two, oh, any other business that can't wait? Uh, don't know of any, assuming that...
We'll approve all the minutes, February 25th and January 20...
There's, there's one...
Third of 2025?
Yeah, there's one...
Or not.
A little question mark, can't, February 25th and January 23rd, 24, I don't know where that one got lost, because that was when Ed was still here.
Is that an err?
Nope, no, apparently not.
All right, well, that's my motion.
Hang on, hang on, okay, for discussion. The one, not the January one, but the February one, there's something in there about the highway, about eight positions, which isn't right.
They're totally...
But it said something like eight filled positions. It's the January one, the old one, that one's okay, I think 24th, so is this one, so under the highway section? So right in there somewhere?
Eight budgeted positions, there are eight, second, second...
Yeah, maybe somewhere there.
Second size.
Eight budgeted positions that are filled, that is not true.
Oh, no, definitely not.
Okay.
Eight, four, what, four are filled.
The one right over Bobby Scott, mine was right there, right there.
Name correction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so that are not filled, or what?
Eight budgeted positions, four are filled.
Four need to be filled, so that, that just needs some revision there, okay?
What's the name correction?
My first name is Ms. Spel...
Oh, whereabouts?
Yeah, where?
In motion at the end.
Okay. So maybe just, I don't know if you can highlight any of that, Scott? If not, we can just circle it on the hard copy or something?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't see your name, Steven.
Down at the very end, further down, to a germ, maybe, or, yeah, right there, Steven.
Oh, yeah, right there, okay, I see it, okay.
Very good, okay, so with those two corrections, I think we had a motion to, both in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, with those corrections, I think that's good. Anything else?
Are we, are we doing the January one?
Oh, I'm sorry, I took them two together, actually.
Oh, we did it together.
Steven made the motion for them both together. That one seemed to be okay, I didn't pick up anything there, that was just, it was so long ago, frankly.
Who can remember?
Sort of do, but not really. That was when we had our first meeting about getting the land use, I mean, getting everybody together, but it was right around Scott's first arrival.